Let you explain what's going on.
We just need you to pull the township. We're going to ride the letter that we sent you, the date has changed from the second and third to the eighth or the ninth, it would rain day.
October.
Yeah, of October. The reason we had to get approval is we're doing a Pendog permit. This map shows you, we're leaving from Barrow, in Kersey, and we're coming all the way down through, crossing the Pendog Road by Friday's Gas Station. That's where we have to get a Pendog permit. And then we're coming through the right of way that we got from Rosebud through Coke Ovens. We have that legal right of way now, the trail, the future trail. And then we're going to cross the Montsion Road, go up to Mount Zion, down Smith Hill. The map's on here, show it, I'm gonna leave that here with you guys. Basically, it's a road ride for fall colors for ATVs. We did have our ride at Spring Run. It was an excellent turnout, we had 540 riders and 300 buns. So, really well, we had no incidences, we didn't have any problems. Rosebud, all the property that we rode on, we do a ride to check to make sure everything's, you know, in good shape, clean and everything. We had no issues whatsoever, so it went really well. We're just doing this ride in the fall as another fundraiser. It's just fall colors, so that's why we're doing it in October. But it's all guided, it's not, they're not riding the mock. We're leading the, basically, it's a guided ride, nobody can go on their own. But we have to have a Pendog permit, and to get that, it takes several, of course, weeks, it might even be over the usual, because they have to, it has to go to Harrisburg instead of just Clearfield. Because they're still working out of, they're not working on other offices yet. Basically, the only, all the roads we're on, our ATV roads are ready. The only thing that Pendog requires, you guys to sign off on us riding on the Pendog Road in your township. Which means just up by Friday's, down Washington, to turn, down Washington Street, and then, um, let me get that, see what Pendog.
I think that's the only one, the letter mentions the crossing.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it just mentions we're crossing over Mount Zion. But we also are gonna go, which is not an ATV road, we wanted to go down the Mount Zion Road and go down Revo Hill instead of going back down the same one we come. You know what I'm saying, the Caldo shortcut? Just that short distance down, make the right on Revo Hill, then back down, and come back up and head back the way we came. That's the only, that's the only. And we will have, I'm gonna request from the fire police, from Fox Township, Day Township, and whoever else I need to, we're gonna have the crossings all controlled by the fire.
Revo Hill is not an ATV road?
Revo, Revo is, but the Caldo shortcut is not.
Oh, Caldo shortcut.
But we have to, we have to ensure, yeah, that short distance, for my. That's, that's all that will be required for you guys.
And you have, according to the letter, at least at the intersections.
Correct, and we have to, according to the Pendog permit, we have to require that we're gonna have that anyhow. So, we, it will go. And then the only other thing is, of course, Pendog requires us to have the liability, which we have already, because we're covered at our track, we have the insurance needed.
The liability to you on the club?
Yeah, we have a million dollar liability policy, which covers this kind of an event, and that's what Pendog requires. They require, like, these other guys that have rides, like, you know, that Central Mountain does that elk ride down Benazet, and they have to buy a special policy for that ride. We already carry that, because we have a motocross track, and we have property in Kersey, so we already carry all that liability. So, we don't have to get a special events insurance, we already carry it. So, we're covered according to Pendog's requirements, so, I think, everything's good, we just need you guys to sign off on it. Pendog just requires that, from any municipality that you do a, like you do your parade, it's the same thing, you have to.
Do they get a copy of your insurance?
Yes.
I have a question, how long is this permit gonna be good for, one day?
It's for the eighth or the ninth being a rain day, that's it.
Two days.
Yep.
But the ride will only occur on one?
One day, not both days, just one day. It's just a guided, like I said, a guided ride.
You have any other questions for me?
And then after that permit requires, it's no longer?
No, they're not allowed, you know, if you know these guys, a lot of these guys already ride illegally, and that's what we're trying to do in El County. That's why we've been here, and that's why we've gotten riderways from Rosebud. We're, they're, they are surveying for the bridge permit, by the way, up there in Burnout right now. So, that's, that's going forward, as far as the bridge goes, for the permit, and then we'll go from there.
You haven't received any funding for the bridge, right?
No, we, we have the money to pay for the permit, and then we are, that's why it's going forward. We did also apply for the grant for the permit and the design, which we may get, we'll know in July. If we do, they'll actually pay us back for us spending our money, and then we'll use the monies for the trail. But we got all the legal paperwork that we needed, from Rosebud and everybody else, to basically, we got a trailhead out south Kersey from Fox Township. We've got a trailer there, and you can legally ride in from there, right now, just to the bottom of Gray Hill, that's it. We're gonna, we're working on the Benazet end of the bridge.
I think we should have a copy of your terms.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
When you leave the clubhouse, are you traveling at all on 948 or just crossing?
When we, when we leave the clubhouse, we're actually going on private property down behind the park, do you know where the park is? We're gonna come out, cross, go by Chicken Hill, and Green Road and all that, but we're already ATV roads. And when we get to South Kersey, that's a Pendog road, that's where the other part of the permit's required. Then we go out to the mountain, and once you hit the mountain, it's ATV roads, all the way down to, you know, Burnout.
Now, Fox Township supervisors, they good with what you're?
Yeah, they're actually approving it, they're, they're gonna approve it for us before their next meeting. It's in their hands right now. I talked to Randy yesterday, and he, they'll probably have it approved here next day or two.
Yeah, I think everything seems pretty.
And they said, it is a guided ride, there's nobody, you know what I mean?
A couple of them already have.
Oh, yeah, and even, like I said, this ride that we do from Spring Run, I mean, that's, they just, we have it all marked, and they just go at will. But we had no issues, we had a couple people in the way, they were lying for some reason, but other.
When you're guiding it, you lead it, then when it ends, the last guy will take them right back to?
Right back to Garwood House, and that, and it'll be done, you know, that's the end of it. Now, we, depending on how many, it might just split into two groups, like, the first group might leave 11, and the second group may be a new, or something like that. But other than that, it's all gonna be guided by one of us, you know, one of us up in the club. And they're, they're like, they'll be, the, the lead person will be one of us, and the end person will be one of ours.
So, if any riders wanna jump off, they're on their own then, right?
Absolutely, they're, they're going, if they're going, it's gonna be illegal, you know. They're required to wear helmets, and there's no, 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 but that's, you know, that was the same with our other ride too. Now, what they do, when they get out, who knows, but I'm just saying, we don't, we don't.
But during the ride, it goes all under your guidance?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, they can't just, it's not a permit, so anybody can ride the Pendog Road all day, no. It's specific, just like you went out to parade, you have to give them the times and everything, when you do the Pendog permit.
And actually, down here, we used to have to call the state police, and tell them the parade's starting now, and when it?
Right, we, Pendog has to know the timeframe, on how long we think it's gonna be, how, we have to give them maps and everything, to show them where we're going and where. The Pendog road, that we're gonna be on, and the timeframe, so.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the dates there, the crossings.
Okay, a motion, a second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried, approve the El County riders.
I'll pay, I'll email it.
And she was gonna email you the update with the change on the date?
Okay, I have work, I'll just change the, the dates, and I'll email it to her tomorrow.
All right, thanks.
I was gonna ask if she knew exactly what.
The Ethan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, she sent her, I think, to that, it's a sample letter of what it, what happened to me. I appreciate it, thank you guys.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the monthly meeting of May 28th, 2021. If anyone's a look at it, any questions? Any questions on the approval, we have a motion? I made a motion. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried, approve the minutes of the mid-20th, 2021 meeting. Visitor's comments, Linda, we're starting this meeting. Nancy?
Not at this time. No, I'm not thinking of that.
Dana?
Well, I got a comment about glass water, the way it was conducted. I'm not real happy about it, I'm actually from, it's no way to conduct a meeting. We already have a video of how he acted with Guy. Now, I don't want you to, I take care of it myself. But I think something should be done about it. Because this, this is, that's no way to conduct a meeting. It had to be broken up by all the board members. It got that bad, and every board member had to step in before it got any worse.
I never watched it, but, you know, I have emails from different things.
What happened, Dana, I wasn't there.
Not that.
Well, I can stand up and talk, he did.
There was one, I seen the video.
But I won't, I won't. I'm not gonna do it, but I could.
You don't like it?
We're out, and then it's in.
Well, would you run me the channel? I'll tell him.
Yeah.
Put it in your channel.
To, 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 he called you right at me and said, you're nothing but a effin'.
He went on and on and on until they.
And that's how I got, I told Dana, and Dana got mad. And it wasn't the first time.
When you need all the board members to break up a battle, at a board meeting, between a guy and a five foot girl.
That was so bad.
You got a problem.
Was this, was this an executive meeting, or a?
No, it wasn't, it was between the executive session and the regular meeting.
And you already have a video of him once talking about Guy.
Well, I mean, he did that in, they did that in the video, on one segment of the June 30th. Then it got worse after the meeting, right?
I mean, one person in here wants their wife or his mother, or his sister talking.
Yeah, but it was on, yeah.
Nobody.
That's right.
And I'm not gonna put up with.
It's, to me, it's really unprofessional, be like any of us up here.
Yeah, I mean, I have a problem, yeah, I have a. There's no way to talk.
I don't know what can be done, anyway.
For me, you're the only board member, you wanna just critique on it, would, do you think he was out of hand?
Well, the first two hours, if you watched the video.
I said, I didn't watch the video, I just seen some.
It's the same, it's the same as when he, he don't like you guys, he's always, you know, rubbing you guys wrong, so. You know, I mean, when it is, it is, I mean, I can't even help out.
Apparently, nobody can, you can't.
Oh, you can, I know it can be done.
The mystery of getting it to be too much.
Yeah, it's definitely.
I mean, they're definitely leaning towards getting rid of it.
Well, it's, I mean, you could ask way into something else, and then you've got a bigger problem.
Right, yeah, I know, prior to that one, there were one meeting before the Corona, I did it ten, I left early, and after that, that's when the supervisors were cut down, the workers. But the individual wasn't mad enough to say something prior to me leaving. The same thing, same thing when we had the last meeting here, where he hammered Jeremy, you know, it's, he's not very professional for being a chairman of, or even being a board member. Board members do have differences, we have our differences. But you don't, I don't care, you don't slander anybody that's a male or female, and act like that, that's unprofessional.
You don't wanna speak, throw four letter words around here.
Yeah.
Well, I think the chairman of the board is supposed to receive the mail, too, for the, for the board authority. And correct me if I'm wrong, if you look at the statistics and stuff, on the department, you can see that Patrick receives all the mail, which I thought he was off the board.
Not true.
Okay, we don't really, we're not. Two different subjects right now, but I mean, if, if, we don't have removal powers for a board member, you know what I mean? But if he's acting inappropriately, and especially if he's being aggressive towards another member, then that's something for the board to address. I would hope the board would address that, even if it's in private, that, as a board, you won't tolerate that. We, we had our own incident like that one time when I was on the board, and it was clearly explained that we won't tolerate it, now or again, you know what I mean? It's, it's not, you're all board members, and you're all, I have different opinions, and you know that, you know that, but there's no, you can't get into these heated.
I'll bring it back to the board.
And derogatory comments.
I was saying, we oughta just, 'cause that was brought up to us, maybe we can just, a letter sent to the board, from the supervisor, you know, to tolerate this, we're not gonna tolerate and put up with it, you know? Which we can type something up.
I'm sorry, we can't do more than that.
Yeah, we can.
I know how you feel, I feel the same way, I think everybody in this room would, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dana?
Well, no, I think that'd be shit.
I said, we're, we're definitely, we're sending a letter, the way we feel about it.
Yeah, don't, don't, that's just no way to talk.
No, you have your differences, but you don't do that to any individual.
I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up to the board member, and they can discuss it.
Okay.
Well, Jim, I don't know, you brought that up last week.
Yeah, that's right.
About that, though.
Last month, yeah.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, did the supervisors, by chance, go down to Forest and check over the new paving and so forth?
Yeah.
Being a mess down there? Yes, we did.
Okay, the water company put extra money towards that, and they paved it out, or?
No.
It weren't supposed to be paved, what about the alley behind the hotel? What's that?
That was a gift.
That was the, uh.
Somebody made the payment. That was the paper's mistake.
Really, that was a gift?
That was.
That's what we're being told, a gift.
That's what I'm making.
Township put money towards that paving, the grant money covered the rest of it.
I understood there was a lot of money, the water company, and it was left over, and they were adding on, giving to the township, that was a gift also.
There was, there was.
No, no.
No?
It's, it's not over yet, we're meeting with.
But, yeah, we just had a meeting down there again Wednesday, and we're trying to get Oak Street resolved.
With Connaught?
With Eads, but they're in charge of signing off on the project, so.
But there will be an other meeting, we met with the commissioners, what, two weeks ago down there, and we told them our thoughts of it.
And I had a telephone conference with them on Tuesday, and they told me to, to meet and discuss.
Actually, meet with the owner, Marzella, and the commissioners, and all the old three of us.
I think Brian was gonna try to talk to Marzella to see if they'd remedy Oak Street, which is.
For the layers.
And we already got a bill for seventy-five hundred dollars, which we agreed to pay up to eleven thousand five hundred. And then the county still paid what they were intending on paying through the grant. So really, we were in a worst-case scenario of eleven thousand five hundred, so I think the material was still paid for, and that's the dispute we're having. You know? And we had our municipal services rep come in, he actually gave us an estimate of the material that's on the alley. Uh, he actually gave us estimates on what it would cost to fix pine and oak. And it's only forty thousand dollars to fix pine and oak with a complete finished product.
That's two inches probably.
That would be, yeah, a minimum inch and a half, you know what I mean? If you were putting your scratch code down, a minimum inch and a half. But it would definitely be thicker in places.
The alley isn't even maintained.
It's not even a lick of fuel road, and now it's black.
Private garage.
It's a nightmare.
Which is why, one of the things I'm going to pay for, um, they just paid over to manholes.
On the alley?
On the alley.
Yeah, see, they covered, I think they covered a manhole, I think there's a manhole in Forest Ballfield parking lot, or Forest Park. Parking lot, and that's only milling down there, but I know they buried one down there too.
I think it should be under Tony's garage.
They buried one in Forest Park?
Yeah, they buried, they buried it on the alley.
It's not done yet, I mean, we're not.
They need, they need to mill them off, if whatever you talk to whoever, I mean.
Well, Ed's is talking to Continental to see if, uh, they'll come down and put another inch and a half on oak, okay? And that's, that's what Darren recommended from Tampa. Um, pine is just an actual conversation between us and the county to see if there's future.
I understand that.
Oh, he's saying that.
Yeah, so if they come back, right, if they come back in with a milling machine, then we gotta get your manholes.
Well, we gotta do it, because if we have a situation now.
Right.
You, you know, those guys are gonna end up down there with a pick and shovel trying to get that.
Do they have an idea of where they are?
They're go risers. We bought the risers and everything.
And they never put them in either, they just took off the rim without them, we, that's another thing.
Keith, they never had a rise before pictures? So as long as those manholes were exposed, they'll have to. If they, if they were already exposed.
You know, that was never paid via alley.
Right. Yeah, like I said, we're not, we're.
But why would they cover them anyways?
They did it one down by the Bridge of Cracks. The bridge company.
Why would you do that?
On my dad's street, I'll be going to the streets.
What I don't know, Joe, is, we already looked at the upper streets and complained about what was happening in the upper streets, and then they went down to Spruce. And they did a beautiful job on Spruce, I'm not, I mean, it's, it's like a profession, what you would expect a paid job to look like. So I told him, I said, that's the sin of it, you know you can do the right thing, you just chose not to over here.
That's where it is, Brooke even got her driveway paved too.
Yeah, see, you know what I mean, there's all kinds of actual material that should be on that road, is what we were trying to explain to them, and then a lot of it should be on pine.
All of it, anything that could.
Really, I mean.
Well, when I left that meeting, they figured they could do almost half of what was gonna be extra.
Half from center to per.
No, the half of the road. If you listen to tape, I understand the half, but that's not seven thousand, that half, that extra half was no seven thousand, uh, seven thousand five hundred dollars that we had, just for pine. That's the okay, just for pine. Because at the meeting, we only approved the half of the money, or the, that's all we approved, was left.
We got the bill for seventy-five hundred for Spruce.
Yeah, the bill he sent us is strictly for Spruce, seventy-five hundred dollars. Yeah. So, I guess we're not being, we're not paying for oak or maple or anything that came out of the grant, that was what I asked Brian to try to resolve for me, because we have each street's cost broke down from Darren. You know what I mean, so we know how much material roundabout should be there.
I had every cost for each street on my.
And what's missing, pretty much adds up to what's on the alley.
It's pretty much what I'm looking.
You know, is what it comes down to.
I, I just.
We even have a measure that estimate the alley, you know?
I think the alley was always kicked in by the residents to do just like tar and jail, because it's private.
Well, at times the township has chipped at, you know what I mean, but we've only ever done maybe once in my eleven years here, you know what I mean, just to keep it maintained, but it's not, uh.
It's not flawed.
It's not, it's not, uh, it's not a.
So are you guys gonna take that over as a road?
No.
We've always maintained it, but we don't, you know, we would never pay it. Well, what do you have to pay?
Taxes on that.
Broke mine.
No, we should take that, we can, we do that now?
We can, because it's not wide enough, that's, there's a.
Well, yeah, there's a house in the middle.
Right.
It is wide enough, you get to that.
If you get that house out there, right?
But we haven't chipped it, Jeremy, previous years, and, and the biggest reason was if anybody needs to notice information, it's because it would wash down on the Pine Street and just leave all that mud and dirt, so it was, so, it, it really. I mean, they cleaned the area out by doing the oil and the chipping.
Right.
When it needed it.
And I know, like I said, here, I think we've done at least once since I've been here, we just do it to hold it together, like you said, it doesn't all come out to the intersection.
No.
And then bring it onto the highway, but, uh, but now, you know, now it's a black, and it's not a good black top road, they use like a four-quot white paper and put three strips down.
Yeah, but they didn't, they didn't even dig down an inch and a half. They didn't dig down an inch and a half.
Right, and that's what, that's what Darren's opinion of oak and maple were, that's the scratch code, where's the top, is exactly what he said. You know, it looks nice in places, but in other places.
I'm glad you said that.
In other places, you can, you can put your hand on it and feel your own black top, you know what I mean?
So, spread out with tar to cover it up.
Yeah, after we complained about it, they committed like driveway sealant, you know, hit it with the tar and made it look like they came back.
We're moving on, like I said, we're still, that's in the works though, we're talking with.
Keep, keep, keep us in line for that, that manhole.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
We really don't have any way of, of sure, we're picking the jungle for them guys to get that back out.
Right, and if you know roundabout where they're at, maybe have them.
They're marked.
Oh, they're already marked?
Oh, yeah, they're green as grass.
Okay, good, that's good.
Jim, you have anything, Jim?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay, we're ready for it.
First of all, uh, the one thing that, uh, I was a little, a little upset with their last meeting, okay, was, uh, what the secretary said that she'd go back in the book and change the minutes. And you guys didn't jump up and say, hey, you can't do that, okay? About copolo stepped in and directed her and told her how to do it, okay? That gave me cause for concern, okay? Because apparently, I mean, I know she's new, but she didn't understand that she couldn't go back and do that, or she wouldn't have made that comment. But you guys should have stepped up to her quick and, and, and set it straight, and nobody did except for Bob Copolo. That, uh, is the comment that I have. The other one is, is that there's no, uh, there's no reason in this world for the disrespect that's handled between people in all this topic. There's just no reason at all for that. And, uh, I agree with, with Dana and, and this woman burned her okay, that comment like that should be addressed. And, uh, all you do it is up to the board, I'm sure that, uh, Freddie and his group can handle that and set it straight. But, uh, that kind of comment, I think that kind of comment, this can't, we just can't tolerate that forever, man.
I agree. As far as the board here, we are gonna send a letter to, well, to the water board, you know?
Yeah, but you have no jurisdiction to know if I know.
No, we, we don't have the ability to remove somebody from one of those boards, just not reappoint would be, you know, whenever that term would end, that would be our only recourse.
I understand, like I said, so write a letter, you know, advise them.
But still, it was brought to our attention about it, you know, that's, we're gonna, you know, just let it leave, you know, but, yeah, that's, that's uncalled for, so. Anything else, yes?
Well, I just thought you were inhale there.
Bobby?
Uh, yeah, about ATV, uh, I didn't write this, but we got a petition from people up on Old Burndale Road. They'd like to have that road open to ATVs, and there's a lot of, we use it, everybody uses it. And my other thing was, on my own behalf, was to open some more of these roads up for ATVs, like a small, for instance, was Old Burndale Road was one of them. Gray Hill Road is not open, you have Smith Hill and all these other roads going up and down, on your, on the list here, it's not on here as Gray Hill being open. I don't understand why, and you have Smith Hill, the bottom of Gray Hill, and Rock Hill at the top, and Gray Hill runs into that, why wouldn't that be open? Uh, Rebo Hill, you have, uh, the low roads open, but not Rebo Hill?
I think Rebo is open to this next section, isn't it?
Where's it open?
To T Bear, I think it's, it's just not the lower half of Apple here is not open. It might be listed as Jackson Hill on the, on the.
No, maybe it's just not on list on Rebo.
We approve that one, after that.
Yeah, but it may be listed on there as Jackson.
Oh, okay.
But that's.
Yeah, yeah, it may be.
Maybe, what's the name of it?
Jackson Hill.
Is it all Jackson Hill?
Jackson Hill Road.
Jackson Hill, Jackson Pine?
Hill.
I don't see it.
I think the high road or dump road.
Yeah, it's the high road and the low road.
But I don't see it on here.
Okay.
But, uh, anyways, and then the other one, the other one was, uh, the Caladonia Road too, not, not the whole Caladonia Road, the old Caladonia Road. Just from the top of the hill to say to Rebo Hill, so people from up the top can draw them over and get down to these other roads.
So if you come out along the side and went less than cut down Rebo?
Right.
Yeah, that was.
Just from the top of the Caladonia Road, not the whole.
To connect, I think what you're saying is to connect Old Burndale to Caladonia, to Mountain Sign, to the Dump Road, there's, there's no way to get from point A to point B legally.
Well, redo it, but you gotta go all the way, and you can't legally do it from Old Burndale, Burndale Road to Spring Run Road, because you gotta walk.
You gotta drive to Burn.
The bottom of the road.
But you're not really technically allowed to do it.
But that's the other reason.
All the way there wasn't on back when this originally went. The lower end was because you couldn't get from, it was too much travel distance along the highway, is what the state laser was in the meeting in back when I'm days. The top side now, uh, if, if Caladonia, if Caladonia Circus bought it, the Old Burndale Road actually goes right straight across the road.
Right through, yeah.
It's, it doesn't go to the intersection, it, it.
It's right at the end of those pines, that little.
Yeah, that's actually the country road.
But those were the ones I, I come up with my own on this paper, you're looking at the map and everything.
I don't know how many roads are actually closed to ATV until you look at that map, which is even hard to read, because it's just in black and holder black.
Right.
But, in my opinion, it's been multiple times that if they're open, they're open. But people are receiving fines for driving on those roads.
Mark, Mark was ATV roads, and then that way would be.
Well, we have to have to be, it has to be.
Get our, what you ordered, but there's, there's fines people for riding on roads that aren't ATV roads, and I don't know why the state police are worried about policing that as opposed to everything else.
I don't, I don't know either, but you know.
Because we have deaths up there with accidents, that's why they're patrolling that, because the, some of the, I'll say state road riders go out and they're crazy and they run into a tree, you know, what are you supposed to do? The state police have a right to patrol them roads up there, they can't put them under control.
Right.
Well, I'd say ninety percent of the people that ride are, you know, respectful of other people's properties, and they don't go through there like a, about three o'clock in the morning when you get a call, somebody hit, wrapped around the tree and you're doing CPR on it because.
Right, but when you're on an open township ATV road, you're under the vehicle code, so that means they shouldn't be drinking and driving, right? Same as in a tractor or motorcycle or, you know.
That they shouldn't be doing.
Right, they should, they should be following the speed limit and, you know, all of that stuff, by us opening them up, that's what we agreed to, somebody traveled illegally. We can't account for the odd accident that happens, you know, it's the same thing that happens in pickup trucks or Harley-Davidsons, right, you know what I mean, so.
I have this petition, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, you can bring it up.
I, I agree with this young man here, that they should be open back, upload his passwords, put ATV signs on.
But I also, uh, I mean, just about all the township roads, if they go somewhere.
Boy, I think the, the thing, the.
I wonder if he went that back.
I know Jason, Jason Muccini called me and he said, you know, if you just can't, if you're getting a fine and pull out of your driveway, driving down your neighbor's house on Old Burndale Road, you know, you're not even crossing the highway, which you're allowed to do at an ninety-degree angle, but, uh, there's, there's some issues.
And that happened, you know?
And that happened. That's gonna make my day, actually, because you moved out. Anyways, that's all I have.
All these people on here are people that live on Burndale. Right, that's what Jason said.
I just wrote down the street shop.
Me either, is it listed there?
Yeah. At one time, my address was out.
Okay.
And that's on here, so maybe I was.
Well, how about the dump room, but here, like I say, if you look.
Have you ever heard Jack Pine Road? No, no, what's that?
You know?
I've never heard of that one, no.
I mean, I used to do Jackson Hill, but.
Yeah.
Did I actually say Jack Pine Road?
Yeah, I think that was, yeah, I think it was supposed to be Jackson Hill.
Yeah, see.
It's not Pine Road, tell it your four oh six.
Well, yeah, if you look at the number, it has number four of six.
It's on it.
That's a shame that.
See, I don't even, what year was this even put into place, I mean, it's definitely something to be revisited.
Probably thirty years ago.
We all know that every neighborhood has somebody with an ATV that's driving down their road, whether, like you said, they're going to get their mail, they're going to the neighbor's house or whatever, do you want to see people getting fined for doing that, is the question. And I think they're trying.
And the thing with that, you know, you cross Mountain Sign. It's no difference than in, uh, Benazet Front Street is all, that's all been all the way up Winslow Hill. It's no difference than driving to Caladonia Tower.
Only, only yours, and, whoa.
Well, I think you have to.
You're always gonna have something.
The town of York that says.
They're writing that right now.
Oh, you're gonna amend it, that's a march.
I mean.
Y'all up short, cut, cut.
People rise and go one.
I go down the road.
Yeah, just like said, the state laser hit Pecanir, but it's okay to have drug stores all around that, you know? On an ATV, but, yeah, I think we'll open some more up.
I do too.
Do you wanna add it to next month's new business to have an amendment, to discuss an amendment to it?
Yes.
Let's just do that. We're still, we're still in the business comments. Let's add that to new business next month, okay?
Okay, we're, Koby, you're done, Friday?
I'm done.
Good Friday, Jim?
Yeah, I have two things, uh, I'd like to thank you guys as supervisors to, and taking the time to come up and check out Blueberry and Cherry. I seen that you did a little bit of work up around that, uh, I haven't, uh, been home for a heavy rain this year, but had to solve the problem with drainage. My first question on that is, did you stake the ditch? Did you snake underneath the road to see if there was a collapse?
I can't answer that, they, I don't know if they went up and did it, cleaned it up, I don't know if they snaked it, I can't answer that.
Jim, I went up on, on a heavy rain, I was actually in force looking at the paving job, and it started raining, and I just cut across and I sat there at the top of Blueberry and watched that water come down. It was actually coming down Blueberry, right across that, uh, Cherry, you can see Cherry's kinda alligatored up right there, the black top, and all going right into that dead spot. Is, is that your yard where it's dead, where the grass is all deadened out?
Yeah, well, you can see the drainage stitches that it's made up to there.
Right, but what I had, what we had them do was taper that into that ditch line, and now we'll have to keep an eye on it when, to see what it's doing, but I mean, it was like, it was sheeting off there like waterfall, and it was all going right into that dead grass area in your yard.
The reason I'm saying about the snaking, uh, it was coming out of the road, and I wish I would've took a picture of it, at, at least an inch high, like in our T J well, like there was actually some kind of back up there.
Okay.
So, I appreciate it, it can't be that much to snake, snake through and, and see if there is collapse or not, but this has been an ongoing matter, I appreciate that, the time you already spent on it.
That pipe coming under Cherry and into your yard, is that the pipe you're talking about?
I'm talking about the pipe that goes under Blueberry, under Charlie Bros's driveway.
Okay, and it's supposed to stay on the high side of Cherry?
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't say where it's divided, where so much percentage of water is going down Cherry or into, I don't have a problem with it, except for when it starts bubbling out of the road, that's when, when it comes down into my yard and makes a mess. Yeah, we should, uh, check that out.
Yeah, we can talk to the sewer company about using a camera and, and see what we see there, that's not, that's not a problem.
Uh, my second comment is, just, I guess you can call it a bitch. Under your meeting agenda, you have a visitors' comment section, which everybody in the visitors' section here takes time out of their day to come to the meeting and be heard, no matter what they say, no matter if it's very repetitious or whatever. I feel that the board of supervisors should not be laughing, ridiculing each individual, I'm not saying everybody, but there are individuals here that you guys pick on, laugh at because of the comments that are made, be it repetitious or whatever. I mean, it, this is a public meeting, you guys are elected officials, let's respect what Jim said earlier, give the people a little bit of respect, hear them out, even though it is repetitious, hear them out and be gentleman about it.
It should work both ways.
Pardon me?
Visitors are getting on us, if there's a remark made, maybe we don't like that remark.
Well, then you stop.
That would be okay for visitor.
Do it professionally.
Yeah.
Do it professionally.
Yes.
Uh, the board has laughed at people, uh, the board has stated comments that shouldn't have been stated, everybody does it, just be respectful, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Anything else, you good? Good, Jim? Just the two?
Yes, just the two for now.
Patrick?
No comments, uh, commend you for a good professional meeting.
Roger Best? Paul?
Nope.
No. No.
Uh, just to give you a heads up, we are going to have a joint workshop, uh, water and sewage, uh, date should be coming up here shortly, uh, I, the secretary's, we're gonna handle it, I was, I look forward to having an idea here maybe next week, what we're.
Do you plan on hosting it here?
I don't know where we're hosting it yet, but probably.
Oh, okay, I guess.
Probably, but I mean, we, we did reach out to the, uh, water authorities and, you know, say, hey, you know, pick your time, whatever, so we can get something set up. And, uh, we're working on an agenda, they're working on an agenda, and we're working on an agenda, so there's gonna be one agenda, but it's gonna be an agenda. Not one word. Not one word.
Right, okay.
Okay, that's, that's, because I know we talked about this last week.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, we can move on here. Uh, approval of the bills, take a look at the bills.
I have a question on the bills.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Seven International, how bad was this, they add up to forty-four hundred dollars?
That was on the window that they told us to share.
There's a bill from twenty twenty that we just.
Oh, it's combined from.
There's, there's like two thousand and change?
Yeah, it goes like two thousand.
Yeah. Keep my attention on one.
If you'd like a copy of the bill, you can get it.
Clean my record.
But that's why that's, it's a bill for.
It seems unusual, I present.
It's two separate bills.
Two separate bills.
The one's like.
Joe, you have to get the bill to look at it, it's probably more than, just mediated what.
Yes, we don't have sex tape.
And one other thing, pardon me, uh, fire tax is seventeen thousand dollars, that's collected by Jimmy, and then it's distributed to the township, and then you guys pay to the fire company, is that how that works?
Yep. Yep. That's my grocery, Mike.
Okay.
Any other comments on the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars thirty-two cents.
All right, so, those in favor? Aye, motion to carry pay the bills in the amount of sixty-seven, five, one thirty-six thirty-two. Okay, treasures.
Downbound was the May twentieth with one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and two dollars thirty-two cents, bound as of June seventeenth with two hundred twenty thousand three dollars eighty-five cents, eight times, that one was on the eighth month, two hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars twenty-nine cents, bound as of June seventeenth with two hundred fifty-two dollars four hundred and seventy, two hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy, seventy dollars and two cents. Figure, bound as of June seventeenth, thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one, capital reserve, bound as of June seventeenth, ninety-one thousand two hundred thirty dollars, bound, state, or state fund, bound as of June seventeenth, forty thousand five hundred ninety, ninety-one dollars, um, general currency, bound as of June seventeenth, plus eighty-five thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars, um, total deposits for the month were a hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
What?
Yeah.
Reversion for salt being?
Uh, the first guy that, the TV was the low bidder, and he came and bought, uh.
Rebar.
Rebar and took some material, we paid a material money, and then he walked off the job, and then a month later, we had to approve the, the next bidder, which was, uh.
Hewings.
Hewings is the guy doing it, because he, the TV had health problems and couldn't finish the job. So, we'd already given him three thousand dollars, so we asked for the difference of the rebar, and he sent us the bill, what he paid for the rebar and the full amount back, he didn't even charge us an hour's labor or anything for the, for the confusion, yeah, so.
What's going on there?
Well, it's supposed to be done by May the first, how's it looking?
Looks terrible.
It's, uh, there's one more four to go on the walls, and then the floor, but because the TV, or I'm sorry, Hewings came in after the fact, he said we'd have to kinda go with his schedule because he already had his schedule booked, so.
He works in between his other.
Yeah, and when he's, when he's able to get here while he's got something else going, he's, he's making four, and the only reason it's not four the whole way up is because forms weren't pulled, and so.
Well, I see you got a cold joint.
Yeah, they're doing it in two fours, and it's, uh, but it is rebar.
Did he put the additive in the concrete, Jeremy, for salt?
I would assume, I don't know, I don't know.
Salt loly, but it's just gonna eat that concrete, if they don't put it in, it's just gonna eat it. And the rebar too.
Are you still planning on setting the full Jersey barriers to the water for three years, that kind of a watch at this point? I don't even know if we have any extra Jersey barriers when it's all said and done.
The ones that used to be there, I guess.
We're, we kind of rebuilt, uh, a place for the dumpster to go when it's all said and done, and then we're gonna keep some for the divider, because we're gonna have salt in, uh, mix. It's gonna be big enough to have two sides, so I don't know what's gonna be left over when it's all.
Well, there was thirteen Jersey bar, barriers that were taken, you know, on the water for, and they stated that you guys were gonna bring them back when you were done with them, thirteen of them.
No, we're not done yet.
Well, we, we gave them for the project, the, funding the stream, and we said, when the salt base and project.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, we're not gonna need them all here, I'm sure of that. Like I said, till the project's done. Okay, you good, on that, Keith?
Yeah, anymore?
Okay, we're just gonna move on then. Okay, correspondence.
We have the water authority, uh, supervisor, Ken, St. Anne Cut, the county's crew authority meeting, commission meeting, that's general pop, Facebook post, copy of emails with the water authority for the June thirteenth meeting, visitors' comment, um, upcoming ATV riders' letter regarding personal encounters without accounting, ride, ATV ride, bye-bye.
Okay, the one number with the correspondence from the water authority here, June eighth, two thousand twenty-one, dear, Jay Township Water Authority will be, will be cutting a road on Kennedy Street to connect a two-inch to a six-inch line, the road will be repaired to specs. If you have any questions, concerns, please contact Justin eight one four seven seven five three two, but the way I take it, you're cutting, didn't ask for approval yet, to cut?
I, that was Justin's baby, I didn't.
Okay, I'm saying, the way it's. Okay, I'm saying, the way it states, you're cutting already without.
No, I think he was supposed to come ask you for that.
Well, this, do you want me to?
Tentatively, unless you say absolutely don't do it.
Well, I know the issue we had on Apple Street, I'll, if whatever went through and all.
But we're, to my understanding, we are planning on fixing it and making it right. We're not going to hold it back on it.
Well, I heard the conversation from the meeting, because I was instructed to watch the meeting, I didn't watch all two and a half hours of it, but I did listen to the conversation on that. And Jamie, did you send them the resolution?
No, because I have a letter for you guys to send.
There's, there is a resolution on the books, since Keith was here, before I was ever a supervisor, using the pen dot spec, that we already had to send back in response to this on June the eighth, and we received this, because, you know, it's not that we're picking on you by trying to hold you to a standard, it's just that that's what the standard is, okay? And the question about us not doing it on our own roads is, uh, if we put base in our road, we're going to top coat and pave the whole thing at some juncture, we're not going to pay to do that extra for our road. That'd be like me telling you what kind of pipe you're going to put in the ground for your waters, and if you don't believe that it needs to be followed to the standard, it'd be the same as us ripping out your water line and fixing it with a garden.
There's one hundred percent, there's one hundred percent play of following.
Okay, well, I mean, the conversation there.
It says that, it says that in the letter.
It does say that in the letter, but that didn't, not what was conveyed at the meeting.
No, it wasn't. That's, that's what's physically on paper, it will be repaired to the township spec. It'll be filled, filled with, it'll, the pipe will be banded, obviously, then backfilled with the proper stone, base coat, and then top coat.
The main thing on cuts across streets is the compaction.
It is.
You have several.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to.
It has to be compacted.
We're going to have to let the cars drive once a little bit.
You have the jumping jack to compact with as well, I mean, we used it on, uh, which road did we use, on Calumney Road and on Barker Hill Road, and it worked just fine, we borrowed it and used it, and those still don't sink in heat, I mean, you have to compact it and lift, it's not.
Yeah, we'll add a little stone, compact it, add more.
That's what you have it for, and if it's not, if it's too much expense, there's always the option of boring, and I don't, you know, you might want to get a truck, you have a boring machine.
There we can't, they try to pour, that's why the water line ends where.
There's all the rock in there.
Well, I mean, if you know we can't do it there, that's fine, but I'm saying elsewhere.
Absolutely.
Bore, we don't want our roads cut up like Pine Avenue is right now, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's why, where we can bore, we will, this street we cannot, we have to cut, so.
And actually, that resolution, Keith, Victor, and Ron Huff, that was, uh, November twentieth of two thousand three.
And, and that was brought on for no other reason other than the sanitary sewer system in Scattered Town. It was a shambles, it's like you're going through.
The world, right.
It was a shambles, but I, I want to disagree with what you said, Jeremy. You, you said that you guys shouldn't have to follow the spec, it's to your better judgment to follow the spec.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
Because, because if you don't follow the spec, and you pay, and then you said, you know, we'll, we'll pay it ourselves, we'll do the same here, you're going to pay for it twofold in the long run, by not doing the, the compaction and the.
The correct way.
Doing it the correct way, doesn't cost you a whole lot of money, I'll do it right.
We, we knew the compaction, and we just put six inches of base in, and we're getting it based until we pay.
Well, I know, but I, I've seen lots of places where you guys didn't put in to spec stone.
Well, then I'll have to talk to the guys about the way they're installing.
No, no, I'm not saying, I, yeah, but, you know.
But, they're told to compact, and we always deal with.
Well, they're told to compact, but if you read the four oh eight spec, the material that you take out is discarded, and you, you backfill with two A, uh, stone.
Right.
For the proper compaction, so, I'm not saying they're not doing whatever, I'm just saying, it's to your better judgment to do it that way in long run, because it's not going to come back and bite you.
My God.
It'd be a good idea to have the supervisors inspect.
The, uh, one of the things in question was this over here, that we ended up having to do after two years of waiting, and, uh, we didn't fill anything in, we just put the black, we hadn't paid to have the black cop put in, because it never got done, and then we billed the water authority, and to my knowledge, we never received payment, so, I mean, was it paid?
I went to the meeting and made.
Okay, there was an argument over payments.
Shouldn't have to fight over these things.
We do, you're okay to do it. The only thing I questioned on that was the yardage, it didn't match my vision, it's, I had to do my job to make sure we weren't getting overcharged, so, but ultimately, okay.
You should be down to measure those streets and force force then, if you, if you can do that.
Brian, Brian, Brian had to make measurements, he took measurements.
We already told Brian, we're going to have a core sample done, because the argument there is getting a little ridiculous.
He was talking about.
Which we can do with a dull spoon in some spots.
That's for sure. Sometimes.
Does that mean, okay, let me do it, do it right, or?
It's to be done to spec, and you'll get a whole letter saying that, and with the copy of the resolution, so that we don't get accused of picking, like we were.
I think, I think the only, it was getting back to us that, oh, they're going to tell you not to do it, and Justin and I both said, well, they just let the gas company do it, so, if that was the case, then it is picking, but we wanted to notify you before we just cut it over. Ended it, so, fair enough, as far as I'm concerned, this is working together, I think it's.
Yeah, it's, if you do it the way you're supposed to do it, you'll have no problem, that's always been our stance.
If it does sink, we'll be liable for, we'll go back and mill it, whatever, hire it to be milled and what it does.
There were a couple letters sunk on the end of Elm Street, some of them, Elm Street for resolve, yeah, that are definitely areas that we're working through, I mean, it's, it's been, it's, it's an issue, you know what I mean, it's not that we're picking.
Those cuts are.
Is that sewage?
There's some cuts.
I know, our cuts, our cuts on Elm have been repaired when you did this.
That's all sewage.
Okay, we'll have to look at it, if there's some cuts.
Now, that's, that's all part of the reason here, that, that that spec was put in was because of Scattered Town, and Rick might remember, I mean, they came in and paved that right away, gone, and springtime coming, it was down about five inches, and they came back in and fixed it, and it was down again.
Ugly patch on Pine, on the left-hand side of, when you're going down Pine, and you're, everything is on this side, where your line was, it's a big ugly patch on the left-hand side.
Gas company.
Uh, no, 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 that's not gas company, that was dug up by the water company four or five times, and it's just always been a mess ever since, and I mean, it's, you were there, because I was there when it was dug up the last time.
I don't recall doing any.
Yeah, it, it's been dug up several, so, I talked to Rick about Ben Marzello when we were down there, I said, yes, I can treat you, please address him, and he did.
In my time there.
So, that was one nice thing that he did, I said, this was definitely a big water company blowout here, and it was multiple fixes there.
In my time there, I do not recall anything on Pine Avenue ever, so.
Yeah.
We should have them contact somebody on the township when they go back home.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's just.
Not the compaction, you know, using the two-way, you have a dump truck now, even, so it makes it even easier for you to do it.
Yep, we have two ways.
Hey, not the stretch you saw, on Pine Avenue, I don't know how it's going to turn out, but then, it, it might be a good thing, somehow, we can township that whole street over top of that, I mean, if you can't get it paved or something like that.
Yeah, it is an option if we can't get it paved.
Yeah, because it cracks.
I mean, I don't know what's going to happen, but if you township it, but it would go for a long time.
Right now, Brian from E D is talking to Tracy, and there might be some C B B G money through drainage or something, where they could actually put something together there. What I told Brian, I said, don't, you know, we need to have a, a conversation that way, so he's working on that, but, uh, it's, something's going to have to happen, because there's, there's going to, as soon as the, the sealed edges wear out, and we're either sealing all those patches, or we're going to have to seal her down, you know.
Don't make it too hard, you may be digging in weed go before two or more.
Oh, yes.
Well, you know, we're doing our smoke test.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, we don't know what we're going to. Okay, I know the weed go system was ninety-four.
It sounds like you might be opening up a damn notice box here.
Well, it might be.
Okay, far, far as this deal here, we agreed with it, like I said, and I said, I hope it don't happen like this other one.
I am, as long as we do it.
And I think too, whoever, Justin, Jim, or whoever, the day you do it, you know, notify here, so we're on it, one of the guys, when you're filling it in, make sure it's up to ours.
Absolutely, yep.
Good, Jeremy?
Well, I make a motion to approve it.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't even think, I mean, sure, I'll second that.
What I'm saying is.
We're just approving it to cut the road, I mean, I thought you need a motion, the conversation was, it has to be done.
That motion, all in favor?
Aye, motion here requires the reading.
Road maintenance and equipment maintenance reports. Is there going to look through that? Trees, trees.
Guess he didn't get his, just to make sure.
You have a list of all the car chip, you didn't get them.
Well, I have a question, Rick, my equipment maintenance, when are the new tires going to be installed, or?
That's, uh, there's a mass lill here, see what's going on.
Well, I, I figured I was going to have it before you guys put them in, when we talked.
Well, we never, somebody told me that you, you got ahold of the supervisor, you sent her in.
I told you guys, I said, I would have the tires.
With a, with a week.
Approval, didn't I?
Yes, yes.
And you guys said that you needed the loader until Saturday or something, for the dumpster, and then you were going to bring it up, when you're done chipping, just bring it up. Ours are there.
They're done, they're done oiling and chipping, so.
Right up next week, one day.
Yeah, we'll meet it when we're doing Calumney Bridge work in July, so you're just going to have it, how long you think you'll have it?
Probably a day and a half.
Okay, okay, we're going to actually use that on that work down there.
You know, you're fine. Whenever, whenever you go and meet it, I mean.
So, at least two days you'll have it.
Yeah, yeah, whenever, you want to bring it up next week, uh.
Yeah.
Wednesday or Thursday, or whatever.
Yeah, we can tell them to give you a call over there too.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just telling them, I'm going to lose you, I'm pretty.
We're going to charge interest on the money we have tied up with the site.
What's that?
We're going to charge interest on the money we have tied up.
Okay, old business, flood issues, curbs you run?
Well, we just had a meeting today to go over the, the site there above Willie Hunter's garage, um, and funding from the Fish and Boat may arrive in September, and if it doesn't, then we won't be able to do that work until next year. They, it's been approved, but it needs all the signatures, they're assuming September, we have to be out of water by October the first, due to, I guess, wild drought, but, uh, so that may happen next year, it may still happen this summer, it may happen next year, but we, we're waiting on. Everything's backed up in Harrisburg, so we're not counting on that actually happening this year, but it, it could happen early fall if it does.
They're all supposed to come back and work August second.
So, I doubt we're going to get the eleven signatures that are required by September, enough time to, to do the work, but, we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed, if not it will happen next year, the money is good for like two years, so we're good to go.
Okay, move on, uh, combining water and sewage boards, which Keith just said you're going to have a workshop put together here in the future.
Yeah, shortly.
Any other comments on that?
Do you have a date, Keith?
Now, we're waiting for, uh.
Chair?
No, no chair, now, I, Lisa's, I, Lisa's got her, maybe she's in chair, wants to talk to the board, I don't know, anybody, I don't think, wherever you guys are, it, it doesn't matter to us, but we want the boards to bring their agenda, and our boards are going to bring our agenda, so the secretaries can make one agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where it's at.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to know that when it's finalized, obviously, know where you're at, we'd like to get a copy of the agenda and the date, obviously, if you want to use our building, we're going to know when.
Right, well, it's going to be advertised.
And you know what, I mean, you're still talking about the actual combination of the boards, or, or is this to work on other things?
Oh, there's a million other things, Jeremy, a million.
But is the combination of the two boards then even in the conversation?
That may come up in the conversation, listen, I'm, I'm saying to you exactly what we talked about.
Okay.
The board members on the sewer authority are going to put together what they would like to talk about on the agenda, they're going to do it their secretary, we ask the water authority board for their board members to make their agenda, and we can put all the agenda on one page and set the meeting, so, that's where we're at.
I mean, what do you guys have to say about any of this, I mean, just wait and see what goes on with this, I mean, it's been going, it's a long, I hope, I hope that you just come to fruition, at least a meeting, with some sort of, like you said.
Gary, the last meeting was one thing on the agenda, are you going to combine the boards, everybody was blindsided.
Well, we had that conversation.
Well, you had the conversation, but nobody else did, I mean, there was only a couple of us that had all the paperwork that you gave us.
Every, every board member was given that, at, at the meeting that we hosted, every board member was given the same information.
I'm saying, there's only a couple of us came to that meeting that had that information, but that's not what everybody was at the meeting for.
Wasn't the meeting supposed to be about the merger?
Right, that's the question I'm asking, because this meeting is a workshop.
Do you know, when I got the information for the meeting to be a merger, when I walked in to sit down and take?
The last, the last.
At the last work.
That was scheduled, I believe was proposed by the water authority, and the comment was made, they didn't want, this was one of my last meetings on the board, just the comment was made, we're going to propose a meeting to work out some issues that we needed resolved, and I believe some board members said they didn't want to talk about the merger. Get to the meeting, I was a visitor at the time, um, and representing the water authority, uh, the agenda we had was merger, so a lot of people were blindsided, because they thought they were meeting to talk about just getting rid of the sludge and working together and doing other things, so.
Well, there was miscommunication.
Yeah, I don't know.
The board said, because.
And you had sent, uh, a letter out to each board member, and they were to write to you if they were for or against this merger, uh, what kind of comments did you get back on that, since we're on the subject? Was.
We got, we got a couple of board members to answer back that they weren't interested, and then we heard nothing else from anybody else.
Yeah, well, that's, see, that was wrong, because you never got an answer from me, and you never got an answer from a lot of the sewer authority board members, because the secretary didn't get into it. She, she.
Our secretary?
No, 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 I had not said that, our secretary.
The previous secretary.
Yeah, you knew that.
Yeah.
So.
Secretary's fault.
Not, not our secretary now.
The previous.
So, she had all that information from our board.
Where did it go now?
But nobody got, and we didn't know nobody got, until way after the fact it was gone.
Do you have help, he's completely passed out.
They're not in the office.
So.
What, what, the secretary put together, but nobody got.
She did.
Oh, you don't think she did? Oh, I see.
I mean, you remember me coming down. So, I mean, I, she just did, she just did.
You mentioned that before, I think it's.
We're having a meeting, and we're discussing.
No, I just want comment about that previous meeting of the water and sewage authority. Like I said, I was really upset, thank you guys for coming to the last meeting, my comments for the last meeting. The fact is, is that, spoken to the public, okay, but, my biggest gripe was, okay, I'm setting it back, okay, and it's like, the conversation, you go, oh, we, you know, Bickering got four over here, over here, over here, and the boards up front are trying to conduct the meeting, okay, like I said, it was, it was, it was just mayhem, I just, I was upset to think that, uh, you know, nobody had any control of the meeting, this time here, uh, they, they went there with the idea, mind, to gain control and keep control, you know, and the general public, they're there, and they're allowed to give a proper con, as far as the merger goes, and go from there, and just keep their mouth shut while the board conducts the meeting.
Right. I agree, and that depends on who's chair in the meeting, if it's just order that you.
Myself, I'll pick a baseball smell and I'll put a table with a baseball.
I mean, obviously, you discuss other things, but that should be one of the topics during that.
You know, this is the situation. You're already short members on your board, right? We've got some, we've, we've got short, we're short members on the sewage board right now. We've got turmoil on the water board, we've got turnover again with employees. Uh, I mean, it's the same things that we brought up at the very beginning, that you can't keep board members. Have all this infighting, if you're talking about working together on meter reads or whatever agreements you're talking about, why don't you talk about working together at one end? That's the question I'm asking.
Well, that's a decision to be made.
I know, you can't answer it directly, but I, I wonder, that's what I was saying, is it actually gonna be discussed?
It's probably gonna be on there.
You know, because.
Yeah, listen, when the agenda's written, I, Gary, I can't answer that because the Water Authority hasn't put their agenda forward to the secretary yet. We haven't, we haven't got ours to the secretary yet, that's where we're at. I just want, I told you last meeting that I would come back and tell you where we were at. And that's what, as much as I can tell you, when the agenda's set, I can tell you we're getting for you. I, that's, I can't do any more than that.
Well, options like we laid out at that time, if everybody doesn't have that paperwork, I can reproduce it. I mean, I'm sure somebody do have it, I know I.
I will.
Uh, but I mean, if there's new members or somebody doesn't have it, we can get that in front of them.
I know, there's no new.
Um, if, if there's, if it's not even gonna be discussed, I mean, I, I personally.
Since we're on this subject, how many people do you have in there on, on your sheets for, that put in for board members? Is there any that you haven't looked at? You know, I mean.
People that have applied, only people that have applied, we always look at the people that apply.
I mean, I understand that, but I mean, is there any in there that haven't been, uh, addressed?
Not that I'm aware of, yeah, I'm not aware, but. If they put an application, and just like we have there for recreation board, we review it the night that it comes through the meeting.
Okay, but if, I guess what I'm saying is, if you had three applications and you put one person on, is there still two applications in there for board members?
No, I mean, if we didn't vote on them once, we don't recycle them, if that's.
Oh, okay, so you don't put them back in?
No, no.
They have to reapply.
They have to reapply.
And you need it, you know, the financial statement on the whole number, right.
Okay, it should, I, I, I guess I disagree with that, because we kept them for a year. When I, so, you know, because they, they put their financial statement in, that financial statement is for the year. So, I, I think they, they should be allowed to be.
You could reach out to them.
Reach out to them for the, in, in that year.
If they were voted, if they were voted out by the, no, I say, out, no, by the board, I don't think, I think that's why they're not being revisited, common sense. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, to me.
I mean, we kept them for a year.
I showed you what I thought could happen, nobody wants to listen to it. I personally would like to at least be able to explore and look into what a management company might bring to it. It's, it's getting, it's, it's getting a little crazy, and it's what we don't want it to be, right?
Right.
I mean, I just.
I'm not arguing the crazy.
Just as an option to compare, well, whatever you come up.
I'm not arguing the crazy part, but our crazy meetings have went down to almost nothing now.
Right, well, I'm, I'm not pointing the finger at.
No, no, I'm saying, no, I'm just saying.
You mentioned turnover, do you think any of that has to do with, as a consequence of discussing the merge?
I don't.
I mean, I asked a question.
We had.
Two weeks ago.
Rick, how many, how many employees were turned over when we had this discussion? It's in the double digits, you know, I mean, it's not, you're not the first one.
Employees.
It's a repeating process that's gone on for as long as it's gone on.
By all means, I'm still on payroll, I'm still there, I'm still.
Right, but you're also working full time somewhere else, correct?
Yeah, but.
And he should still be on the defense board also.
I asked a couple of months ago. I asked a couple of months ago.
There's no.
If the merge happens, is my job the same? Guy, I would say you've always told me you'd never do anything to affect my job, I think you're standing.
I would not unless you.
Right, I, I think you're saying.
You're saying that.
Right, I think you're suggesting that. The answer I got was, that's not up to us. Do you think that weighed into my decision to leave? Absolutely.
And I, but you understand that it's not up to us to hire or not, yeah, but hiring, firing, or whatever moves on.
You're steering the ship.
We have no control of that.
You're steering the ship, you want this merge to happen.
So the way I think it's a good idea, and the way it is.
Though, I don't think, they don't want the merge.
Well, you guys already have the senses that either, there's a lot of members that are on both boards that don't wanna have the merge. Why are you still pushing it?
About what's, I mean.
I mean, isn't the.
What we wanted to know is, what are they against, that's what we wanted to know.
Yeah, just a simple no, because they don't wanna think about it, is not an answer, as opposed to information that was presented to look into. Consider how you can make it easier on yourselves. Easier on us, because we take all the flack.
There was a lot of uncertainty and a lot of unanswered questions.
Yeah, but that's why we wanna.
That's why we gave you a, a, a starting point, and then there's been really literally no discussion since, let's be honest. You know, and, and heck, because whatever the meeting was, it didn't get anywhere from the very first meeting.
When we discussed it the last time, I asked why, who's gonna pay the forty some thousand? Who's gonna pay the forty, fifty thousand a year for a person?
Try a little higher than that.
I'm just saying, every person.
Yeah, your manager, the.
Unless you have a full-time manager, you're going to have insurance. And I said the same thing at the last meeting we had. And I had, I written it out, it could be fifty thousand dollars a year. So, is the sewage gonna put twenty-five thousand in, and the water gonna put twenty-five thousand? I mean, that's what you're looking at.
That's exactly the way I envisioned it and, and mentioned, I know it's been like, uh, years since we had our first meeting, but.
So that's fifty thousand now, so each board's gonna have to put twenty, at least twenty-five thousand. Because once hired in full time, we're gonna have to give benefits and health insurance, that health insurance.
But you're gonna have.
That's gonna lead to increased costs for the customers.
Well, I'm not saying.
Not necessarily.
That's my, that is my concern about mortgages, or, more is, is that, I just don't, I can see the cost, but.
Yeah, but that, I, I just wanna say, I think if you get a management company, they provide the manager. They provide the insurance, they provide all of that stuff. And in order for them to do that, then they have to pay them a fee.
Which comes out of your respective accounts, you know, if it would be, if you would keep.
Well, even in that, even in that, Gary, you know, Randy's talking about fifty thousand dollars, you, you know, in reality, you're not gonna get a manager for fifty grand.
There are plenty of people in this town that'll go to work for fifty grand, I'm sorry.
There are plenty of people that'll work right now for fifty dollars an hour, Jeremy.
We have people begging fifty grand a year here, I don't think we do. I don't think we do, but they go to work every day, you know, I mean.
Work every day, but, I'm saying, try to hire somebody, Randy. But, I mean, just try. Really, it'd be a good thing if you could get a person that had license to run both the authorities. And then you, now you're hiring a licensed operator, then you can see that fifty, sixty grand.
That was brought up in my.
And if you had, and or if you had a, a manager and a licensed operator on each side that paying people to hang their licenses, which now we're gonna do at both plants. You see, that's, I know that's the way it's spent, it doesn't have to be that way, if, if you, if you have a good structure.
You have to have a license.
If you put a manager in there or a management company, you take your.
It's a decision for the board. No sense breathing.
No, it isn't, but we, I guess what we're saying is, we want to see you at least have a legitimate conversation.
There better be.
And, and we, I mean, I wanna be there to hear it. You know, we're not gonna put ourselves in there as a, a third party, but I'm gonna be there as an observer.
It's, it's a good conversation, I mean, I've always said fundamentally, it's, it may not be a bad idea. It's just, there's a huge planning process and a lot of transparency needs to happen as well.
I think too, between both boards, when you set this up, between, uh, well, there's eight members between both boards, you're down to, you gotta see, make one of them chair of the meeting. Don't say it's gonna be Jimmy or.
Pick the most.
Never get along with the last one.
Pick the most well-known person.
Pick the most professional person out of the bunch.
Yeah.
Well, Patrick, you said you still work for the water company. So are you working as an employee, as an operator, as a part-time person?
Part, part-time as needed, uh, for now, I am.
As a, just a maintenance, or?
As a part-time as needed operator. Um, ultimately, right now, I'm technically operator in charge. Feasibly, that's not, that's not a good idea for me to do permanently, um, so, I'll be, at some point, hopefully, soon reduced to an available operator.
So, if you're still gonna be there as operator, then why did you leave?
Because I'm not gonna leave them high and dry. And they, you know, I mean, whoever they get new, I can come in and help train and show them that plant, I don't wanna leave them high and dry.
What's your charge now?
Uh, it's, it's, to me, no benefits, thirty hours, thirty dollars an hour, flat rate.
Make the point that you're a lot less than cost compared to Janus.
Yeah, and it's.
I think that's the thing about.
I'm not there.
We're not.
I mean, I wanna.
I wanna say this, can I get permission from the board to at least, at least, uh, research the management company so we have an option there?
Don't cost us anything?
No, I'm just, I'll just make some phone calls and find out what, what, what exists out there. I mean, I know there's a company, I talked to Eads about it one time, they're working in Evansburg, I can't think of the name of it. But at least, I mean, I just to get the information, I just wanna gather the information, so it's something.
I think I will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah, you wanna prove that with a motion, so I can go after it, of course, and nobody will question.
Shouldn't you check it out? I'll second that, all those in favor? Aye, aye, okay. Okay, cavaing pipe bridge. Gary or Guy, I didn't make that yesterday down here, so give an update.
You wanna do a bit?
Yeah, we had with Keith and Eads and tried to put a game plan together, and we're shooting to get it down in July, providing we can get the proper equipment.
All right, we're, we're, um, thinking now, after being there on site, we can use the loader and, uh, man, that one. Instead of the snooker truck, that actually be a little bit easier, so that's the route we're going now. Keith Crusoe's gonna get steel ordered up, and we're lining up the equipment that we need. And hopefully, by the end of July, we don't wanna hit it in low water conditions, because GM said, you know, they don't really want them in the water, but as long as it's okay, we don't really have to get in the water, so to speak, but to reach out, we're gonna get a hundred and twenty footer and get up underneath it.
We got prices from GM up there and.
But, yeah, we have a plan, now we're just trying to get all the steel ordered up, and hopefully, there's no snags on that. I'm waiting for the lowest water conditions in July that we can get everything lined up, so.
Okay.
I can get it.
Right.
Okay, we're good with that, okay, next is the DCNR, the cavaing pipe road, which has been going on, it's on our end with our attorney, that's all done, so we're just waiting for.
Yeah, she already, and she followed up with them again, and still no movement down there. When they go back to their desk, did somebody say?
On the second day.
Okay, so maybe I do that, we'll get a signature.
I just made a trip up that road up to Shaggers, you know, blonde up there. Pretty rough road to go.
Yeah, they started putting that base in there, because they thought they owned it.
Yeah.
And then they found out it didn't go through yet, and they just stopped, and it's.
Yeah. They done a lot of stone to put it down, but that's even looking very rough also. So you need to fix, uh, those or, or track it in and break it up.
That was up to Fashi, that's bad.
Those are, go through the meeting. Less than we could do.
Okay, can we hear on that end from them? Okay, ordinance update?
Ordinance update, yes, I have that for you. Okay, for the month of June, uh, we still have a total of eleven complaints that have been or are being handled. Two of them are pending, three of them have gone to the magistrate. Three are in process, and three have been completed. So, uh, it's a little slow going, but it's going. Yeah, we're just only go up from here, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're all due to it, and it's going along pretty good so far, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good that at least three completed, let's, hope we get a few more completed, whether that's with help of the magistrate or not, but.
Little by little, we're getting there.
You see that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to two fifty-four Henlock Avenue, the demo bid. And we did receive five, right?
You tonight?
I go with.
Pete, you want to go? Is that?
Well, there's tape on it, that's.
I think I brought cats.
He's gonna be hurt.
Yeah.
Cats?
Yeah.
I, I haven't been in developing, and we're just gonna assume the answer's known to that question.
Oh, no, I think we should call the maintenance side.
Cats are, cats are agile, they'll get out. Okay.
They have nine lives, too.
They probably have eight, ten years, are we calling?
Okay. Here we go, we got a bid from Gaff Enterprises. You want me to read the whole thing out?
Just the, just the prices, I mean, because they're all just on the same sheet.
Okay, we can ditch yourself, you know, state in the letters where you see bid. Bid includes demolition main structures, wells, the garage, all demolition waste, with the exception of the Birken concrete. Disposed of appropriate facility, the Birken concrete left on site is discussed. All utilities will be notified, disconnected, and water storage be capped, requested. When finished, the area will be covered and seeded. We are the, if we are the winning bidder, township will issue a certified, certified insurance prior to any work being done. It assumes that any necessary inspections have been completed, no hazardous materials exist on these premises. The disposal costs of any such material found will be responsible. Disposal cost of any such materials found will be responsibility of township. Our bid for this project is thirty-two thousand five hundred, called late vice president.
Who's this one coming?
This is from Bucktail Escavators. Supply demolition permit, demolition haul, all necessary waste to approved landfill, bury all brick, blocks, stone, and concrete, haul and fill and grade off. Seed line, fertilize, and mulch. Remove of all junk cars and tires. Total cost eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars.
What was that price?
Eighteen thousand nine eighty-one.
Are those bids exactly the same, are they getting along exactly the same thing?
They are, yeah.
Sounds different.
No, they're different.
This is from Earth Movers Unlimited, Cairo Town, PA. Uh, we're a submitted bid, okay. Price includes removal of junk cars, lawn mowers, and so forth, tear down house and garage. Anything that is considered clean fill will be used to fill in foundation, providing remaining fill to be filled in foundation. Call electric gas, make sure services are off, cap both water and sewage lines. Make sure all is covered and seeded, all applicable permits. Insurance including, but not limited to general liability and workman's compensation. Uh, their total bid was, okay, here's price note, does not include asbestos serving, and if needed, remove any hazardous material. Price thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And that's from Earth Movers.
Thirty-six what?
Thirty-six.
Four sixty.
As far as that asthma goes, that bill was meant later back in the twenties or earlier, so you're gonna find something.
Okay, this is from Myers Demolition and Escavation. For Myers.
Meyer.
N-Y-E-R-S, demolition and excavation, Ford City, Pennsylvania. Okay, contract description, job scope, demolish, dispose, redid date to condemn structures at two fifty-four Henlock Avenue. The sum of thirty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars fifty cents. Covers all demolition cleanup, disposal approved, to approved landfill. Myers demolition will handle the PA one call, county inspection, capping water, septic lines required by the county. Equipment, just showing what they'll use, a cat excavator, deer. Liability, Myers demolition excavate is fully insured for all machines, personnel damages, as well as a multi-million dollar comp and liability. License, Myers demolition is not liable for any asbestos removal liability, minus an act of God or weather while job is being completed. Payment terms agreement of thirty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars fifty cent. Fifty percent of payment due upon arrival of start date, final pay upon final date of completion. Final pay upon final date of completion. Myers demolition takes ownership of the building, full liability, and contents, contents upon demolition. Start date, stop, and that's all vacant, dear. Then our last one is from G N R Escavating Demolition in Tyrone, Pennsylvania. Okay, for the sum of twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars, G N R Escavating Demolition will perform the following scope of work at two fifty-four Hemlock Avenue, Weeden. Completely demolish and remove the existing two-story house structure with addition of one-story garage and shed structure. Foundation voids to be backfilled using suitable material from on-site, including, including clean brick, block, concrete. Basement floors slab will be broken to allow the positive drainage and remain on in place. Disturbed, disturbed areas be finished with grass, seed, and salt, straw, mulch. Includes permit. Proof of capital, equipment, and personnel will be made available if requested upon award of bid. All demolition waste debris will be disposed of according D E P, state, local regulations. G, G N R will leave the site in a given and orderly manner when the job is complete. Down payment of fourteen thousand six hundred due upon signed proposal. Final payment, fourteen thousand six hundred due upon completion. And there is a copy of their certified liability.
I think they got a good bid that they did, or eighty-five dollar bid. I'm telling you, like, they must have had this, this something there.
Yeah, it's Bucktail Escavators, I mean, I just...
He stored it out while he was placing.
I'm surprised at the difference.
Yeah.
He's close, though, good city area.
Yeah.
Paul's built too close.
He was writing, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I write my whole...
They know who's closer, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you got, that's the only thing that concerns me, they were fucking with us again.
Elimination's...
I mean, he's the low bidder, and we know we've doubled before, but, you know, I don't wanna go as I love it or I don't wanna go on.
I'd go with him, but I'd just watch it.
Right, I mean, he's got a hold of the...
Yeah, that's big.
I don't wanna pay to, to have one to move down by me, and it's not, I thought it would be more.
I'd call and talk to Bucktail first.
There's things you did right on there that he might not be doing that you would...
Yeah, maybe we should call and do it.
I mean, Del's one's a good kid, I'm gonna look at her off. That seems like he must have missed something, you know.
Yeah, everything he doesn't have on here is about the investors.
And vehicles wasn't on there.
So if you, how does that work? If you call him, you have to put that back out of bid, then?
Yeah, I mean, we just have to either approve it on his pickings.
I approve it. I mean, that's a, that's a big savings.
It certainly is.
I, I know, I know, but that's a big difference.
I mean, he is the low bidder, and he is reputable, 'cause we've worked with him before, not on teardowns, but, I mean, he's probably sitting on, oh, we don't know who he is.
There's not too much to mess up on there, though.
And he'd have to be a boss.
You've heard of him, you've heard of him.
I know this again.
Did it talk about him burying the brick?
Yeah, they're all doing that, 'cause that was given to them all, that they'd use the clean fill for fill, and everybody, everybody...
And remove a junk car's tires, all the junk, seed, fertilize, haul and fill and grade off. Demolition haul all necessary waste to approved landfill.
And Jimmy, he picked up the packet that everybody else got, right?
I emailed him, everything's fine.
I make a motion to go with Bucktail.
Follow through the contract.
Motion is approved, except Bucktail O S M A's bid for the two fifty-four demo amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. Okay, while we're doing that, uh, sorry, moving to new business.
Subdivision.
Two subdivision, actually.
There is two?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a subdivision here, and I...
Freaked out, though.
Minus subdivision lands of, this is Steve Debbie and Colleen, the crown letter.
That's the Wapiti.
Wapiti, wood.
What is marching?
That's an old Indian word. Wapiti.
Sounds Italian to me.
No.
Minus elf.
I figured.
Tooth, corner, planner, put that animal on.
No, you had to do that first, or you just...
Dog's helping dogs run.
Okay.
Go around, go around, and stand there.
Okay.
See you later, though.
Gee, actually, where we got there.
That's way too long.
Okay, looks, it's, yes, I go two feet.
It's just, it's just their property, they're subdividing to, I'm assuming this Jesse, Jess is some relation, they're east from Dallas.
It's his son, and they wanna build a house now. Is that what it is?
Yeah, within the next five years. Okay, so he's just subdivisioning this land.
Yeah, it's from Dallas, Pennsylvania.
Well, he's from here, but that's where he lives now.
Yeah.
So, it's just a subdivision, and how big is the parcel they're subdividing? Can you see it on there, Rick?
Hmm.
Should have his name on it, his name, too. Those are the maps, we're not supposed to sign right kind of way.
Right.
You can hand it over, you have to take a look at that.
There's a couple of them.
There's actually three of these. Lot three, usually it's highlighted right around here. Lot one, so is it containing just one lot of these three, or is he doing all three subdivisions?
Looks like three, three existing parcels, to be reconfigured, creating three new lots.
Okay, so here's what it is.
There.
Lot one is gonna be where his kid puts the house, lot two is their house, and lot three is their business, cabins. So it's lot one, they're creating three separate lots, but it'll be proposed house on one, uh, their own house is already on two, and then the third is their business, so. And, uh, everything checked out with the county, just the fact that we're not supposed to sign these maps, because they had some wrong parcel numbers on them, so they're actually having new maps made with the correct parcel numbers on it, then we can sign. So tonight, we just have to approve this one.
What's the address, Stuart?
Where's this robbery?
Cabins down there? Before you get into that town.
Yeah. It just says River Road.
River Road, yeah, I mean, it is, but it's...
Triple apple, five fifty-five.
Fifty-one eighty-six, River Road.
Yeah.
Five fifty-five.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivisions pending the correct maps. How's that sound?
I'll second. Oh, in favor, aye. Depending the maps are...
Yeah, we can't sign these ones, but everything else is checked out. They give you a map only if possible. All right, there's a, there's a second one then, right?
Yep. John Green.
No address on this.
No.
No address. Boy, no, but this is, this is a lot different. This is something with Pendor. Apartment D E P, subdivision, proposed two lots, little G Township. No facility building to be erected.
Yeah, I mean, Jody always reviews them at the county, at the planning department.
John Green.
No comments. Usually she'll make, if she has comments on here, it's subdivision, you have anything, but she hasn't.
What's the guy's name, Rick?
John Green.
John Green.
John Green.
No address on that, but what's this?
No address.
No address.
Yeah.
That's how much I know about my eight. I was reading that she's breathing.
He shows five.
That's in the forest land, is what he's saying. No, no building will be erected, no sewage generated, this is on the D E P. Where the heck is it? Sawasdee Road, Turtleback Road, anybody? Spension or Township, Kansas.
This is...
Robbin Road, Spension. Okay, I'm looking for drugs, like, where are they?
Forty-five thousand acres.
Is that what it is, forty-five thousand acres, or forty-five point something?
Forty-five, and then a hundred and eighty-five.
They were on side of Pendor.
Lot one and lot two. It's, it's, we've got certified through Pendor that it's gonna be forest land, no buildings, no sewage generated, just forest land, that's what they have here.
That'd be near the airport, then.
Yeah, it's actually off of, near Robbin Road.
What do they want you to do about it?
Just some treasure property. It's, they're dividing, they're dividing one parcel there.
Yeah, it's like two hundred and fifty thousand acres.
I mean, they got, they got their plan right here from D E P, they're just gonna be forest land, nothing generated, so I don't know. Anybody else have a problem with this?
Nope.
County doesn't have any recommendations, so that's, you're running against things. I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision for John Green. I, I... He's like, we can't sign Kansas media, you know, like, you need to press...
Okay, we'll move on to the board. Okay, application for recreation board. Penny Ben Alstine, Sixty Kennedy Street, Birmingham.
Oh, I thought you said your number, that's why I'm not...
Penny's already on the board, she's just looking to stay on the board, so I make a motion to appoint Penny Ben Alstine to the recreation.
This term, there's two lot.
What's the longest one?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, then that's the longer film, is that the longest?
Okay, 'cause she didn't specify here.
Where, give her the longest.
Can you imagine?
I, I signed it. All right, motion, Carrie, put Penny Ben Alstine on the rec board.
She was already on it, but it's firing.
Okay, then you got it. Which we did, up on A T V, all right, so that's covered already. And the addition we put on was to bid out the old grade or...
We're gonna put it on you this bid to start. What do you wanna, you can set a minimum bid on there, what would you like the minimum bid to be? I mean... What's wrong with the machine? Nothing's wrong with the machine, it's got a new, or newer one.
Nothing, I mean, they used to, they used to...
Yeah, we used it right up until we got the opportunity to get one a little bit newer.
I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's an eighty-one, yeah.
It's got some grease and cracks.
Yeah, maybe.
They are.
I have pictures of it upside down.
It's one fifteen and draw.
Fifteen thousand.
Got it out of fourteen.
Okay, but that, you don't wanna set your minimum, what about?
What's the...
You even said it, and then you have us go back, and if it doesn't sell, you can put it out for another thirty days, or however long it goes to bid.
There's no paneling in that.
Twelve, we're gonna set it by the twelve, just enough.
You don't do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they call it, but it's considered, it's a little bit of care, and it's only just happened to hurt Strands.
I'll second it. All favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion, Carrie, minimum bid of twelve thousand.
What year is the new one?
Ninety-five.
Five?
Two thousand and five, isn't it? The new grade is...
Nineteen ninety-five.
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 Yeah, we got it off Fox Township.
And what other one, you're not down for bid, what year is that?
That's ninety-one.
That's eighty-one.
The new one's also a champion?
Yes.
Which you made in Canada.
Sure, I'll take your word for it.
That's where I got the parts, it's okay, I have it, I have it.
All right, let's give what we got here.
Motion for adjournment.
I'll make the most of it, sir.
All in favor, aye.